We'll call to order the Village of Oxford Planning Commission meeting this day Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P M sharp. I'll rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Matt's secretary, hold on please.
Justin Ballard.
Here.
Scott Quinn.
Here.
C J Gosgar.
Here.
Maury Hammett.
Yes.
John Knoll.
Yes.
Leslie Kilek.
Yes.
Tom Schultz.
Yes.
Fantastic. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's September nineteenth?
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Agenda approved. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three?
Make a motion to approve the minutes July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That moves us to correspondence. I'd like to take the opportunity now to welcome Tom Schultz as the newest planning commission member. A second tour of duty, seasoned veteran on this side of the country. So, welcome Tom.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks.
Call to the public. Anyone? Okay. With no one from the public to speak, we can now move to next agenda for business, which is I have a P C twenty-three dash zero eight site plan review for senior living facility at seventy-two Beehive Drive with Beehive Homes of Oxford with Matt Kotmeyer as the applicant. Mario, if you will do us the honors, walk us through your assessment.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'll just be summarizing my review letter dated September thirteenth, just point out some highlights. But basically, as mentioned, this is the proposed new construction for a building B at the Beehive Homes Development. So the site itself for the construction is the southeast portion of at the vacant four-point-five acres of the property. Already on the property, on an additional one-point-six acres is the existing Beehive Homes building, Building A, located on north side of Beehive Drive. That building is a single-story twelve-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-seven-square-foot facility built for twenty residents. And this building, when we look at, this building was approved previously with a special land use approval for the overall Beehive development site. They received special land use approval on December fifth, two thousand and eighteen, with the understanding that the overall development plan and that special land use granted for them will apply to the remaining phases of this development. As originally proposed, on the eastern portion of the site, we're going, are proposed five of these senior living, assisted living facilities. And on the western portion of this site, originally approved back in two thousand and eighteen, are fourteen townhomes. So the development process, as I mentioned, granted the special land use for the overall development. And this special use approval will not need to be updated unless the applicant chooses to make changes to the already approved overall development plan, whether they want to change the layout of the buildings or the site plans that are already proposed. When it comes to site plan approval, the building A was granted site plan approval back in December of two thousand and eighteen, and now they're proposing the construction of the phase two or building B. And this building would be twelve-thousand-three-hundred-forty-seven square feet area and be, and it is intended as a, for a twenty-bed congregates' style senior living memory unit facility. So these questions, our review letters, still be on the site plan requirements. One thing we wanted to know from the beginning was that the legal description for this parcel and the building A parcel both have Glasby Street existing as an easement over their property. However, within the village, all public roads are their own separate road right-of-ways that are typically dedicated to the public and that they don't just exist as easements. That's a situation that normally occurs in the township. So we would recommend that the sixty-foot Glasby Street future right-of-way should be officially dedicated to the public through the appropriate either village or county process. I wasn't sure with this point Glasby, if that's under village jurisdiction or Oxford, excuse me, or county jurisdiction. But the intent of this is to make sure that all future activity done by either the village or the county in the right-of-way will not need to be, need to exercise easement rights because as a, as a dedicated public right-of-way, then all of your public utilities and public road entities will have the ability to do, utilize the right-of-way as needed. So then looking at the overall development itself, we find that the majority of the, as proposed, is consistent with the already approved overall development plan as part of the special land use. The building B designation, and that was part of their phase two, that's consistent with the original approvals. The building location is consistent with the approved overall development plan. When it comes to the building elevations and the style and the, even the materials and color, that is consistent with the already approved locations and style as proposed for the development plan. You know, the building is intended to, is proposing to have basically match the style colors and materials used on building A. When we look at even the parking, the proposed, while only five parking spaces are required, they will be providing fourteen parking spaces. And this includes two ADA van accessible parking spaces. And this configuration is actually consistent with the previously approved overall development plan. Just moving on to landscaping, there were four different items related to their landscape plan that we'd like to have them addressed, either related to the size of the shrubs. You want to ensure that there is a variety of species. And then we also would like to ensure that based on initial estimates of, initial information of the, there's six red maples shown on the east side of the building. They're located in the future right-of-way, but they also may be within fifteen feet from existing overhead power lines. So we'd just like their landscape architect to take a look at that to see if, based on the species proposed, those might need to be shifted over a little or need to be, change the species to be something that's a little bit more with a reduced diameter of the spread, mainly because that way, whenever trees are positioned too close to D T E or consumers' power lines, they sometimes get trimmed in a very negative way in terms of their growth pattern. And they obviously, they don't provide the necessary benefit that street trees would. So we'd just like their landscape architect to take a look at that. And then finally, also take a look at the location of proposed tree, shrubs to be saved and those trees on the southwest corner of the building, just because we feel the grading that's going to be going on there might impact the overall health of those. So those are just some specific things with landscaping. And then finally, just a question for the planning commission with regard to the lighting of the facility. The current facility only has residential-style light fixtures on the building and this proposed new building would be a similar situation. So we were just curious as, in terms of if there might be a need for any type of lighting for pedestrian paths leading from the buildings to the parking spaces. You know, I know for us, sometimes it's, it's, you know, a matter of, all right, we want to keep more of the rural character and keep it, keep it low, low light levels, but at the same time, given the level, given the nature of the use, I was just wondering if the planning commission might feel might be necessary to have some lighting in, along the sidewalk to the parking spaces. But beyond that, as I mentioned, the vast majority of the plan is consistent with the already approved phase in as originally discussed. So we would recommend approval contingent upon planning commission's discussion of the lighting issues, that means the middle of the rise light and landscape plan, dedication of the Glasby Street right-of-way, than any conditions of approval as noted by the village engineer and the fire marshal. Who's there? Thank you. Loujens, take any questions?
Thanks, Mario. Before we get to commissioner questions and comments, I only have one, maybe more so, question and comment that are educating myself on the right-of-way on Glasby Street and why that is a, an open point or how that is addressed by the applicant, considering where the parcel is located. Can you help elaborate more on?
Sure. So as I mentioned, you know, in the village, all the right-of-ways exist as dedicated, or all these streets exist as dedicated right-of-ways. That's because they're part of the platted subdivisions. In the platted subdivisions, the, the, all the roads get dedicated to the public. The village, they're either village roads or county roads such as, you know, Washington. And the other alternative for that is in townships, when the road isn't part of a plat, it exists as an easement over property. So technically, the legal description of the properties go to the center line. And then the county can choose in those, in that instance, whether they want to have, continue to utilize the easement or to have the public right-of-way. We just find that, and the vast majority of all the roads in the village already are dedicated to the public, so this issue doesn't come up. It's just that in this instance, there's, there's a portion of it, because of its location directly adjacent to the township and because it hasn't been developed, that the road still exists as an easement. And, and one thing, it just makes things clearer because the building and the setback lines have already been, already been adjusted for this sixty-foot right-of-way. If you notice how far the building is from the Glasby Street travel lanes or, you know, the actual lanes for vehicles, it seems far away, but it's actually because we're originally approved back in two thousand and eighteen, the measurement for the setback was taken from the center line. And then, and then the setback for the building was taken from that street center line. So it's, it's, it's a mapping thing, you need to make sure that the map is accurate. It also makes any future work done by the village or the county in the right-of-way a little easier because they don't have to ask for permission technically. I mean, they already have the easement, but it's just one of those things that we like to clean up the map whenever we encounter these things in the village.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks, Mario.
I have a right-of-way related question too, not about the village right-of-way, but I'm curious about the Palliant Trail running along the south boundary. Is there any right-of-way issues about that property?
No, because the, the road, the Palliant Trail already exists as its own separate right-of-way because it was the railroad previously and that, that right-of-way always existed. And so technically, I'm not sure if it's actually right-of-way or it might actually be an actual parcel.
It's a parcel.
Yeah, it's actual parcel. So that's actually property owned by the, back in the day by the railroad and now owned by the, I presume by the Palliant Trail.
Down in the D and R.
There you go. Yeah. So, so that property line has always existed and it will maintain, be maintained.
I thought I saw something about replacing lawn where the area would be disturbed that showed the south side of the Palliant Trail. Did I misread that? Is there gonna, is the ground gonna be disturbed across the trail in any way? Okay.
No.
All right, good, thank you.
What are your plans? I'm sorry.
I could wait for all my stuff until everybody's done.
I was just wondering what your plans were for lighting? Any exterior lighting as far as around the parking areas?
Yeah, please. Let's do this.
Name association with the?
Absolutely. Jim Butler, P D A group, civil engineer for the project, address is eighteen forty-nine Pound Run, Auburn Hills, Michigan, four eight three two six. Also Matt Kotmeyer, the owner and operator of Beehive Homes, is with her, is with me here this evening to answer any operational questions you have. Regarding the lighting, right now on the existing building, there are residential-style poach lights around the building. We are anticipating replicating that on this building as well.
And do you find it does enough lighting towards the parking areas for your staff to get out?
Bring the applications, Jim.
At eleven o'clock at night when it's dark and they're doing shift change, they can see well, they can?
Yes. Yeah, so the, the way that the current building is, you can see it on the picture, we have the spots in the front and then we have the spots, the bulk of the parking is by the dumpster on the side of the house. We do have a light on that, on those parking spots, so you can walk from the front all the way up through to those parking spots. And all the parking spots on this proposed one are replicated in the front. And so we find that the lighting is good enough. It's a, it's a balance, and when we did the first one, it's a balance between not, because of all of our windows, the resident rooms are all around the perimeter. So I feel like we've struck a nice balance without having that line, that light shine into the rooms to negatively impact them sleeping at night. So I haven't had any issues whatsoever in the four years that we've been open.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a couple of questions. The fence that's going around, the material gonna be for that? The fencing?
Is that bottom possible?
I don't know, I.
Is that bottom?
Yeah. On the, on the back property line or around the?
On the back.
We see.
Well, it's, it might be elsewhere, it's gonna be different than?
Decorative aluminum. It's a decorative aluminum fence, black, illuminated fence.
Okay. And that's, and, and so all fencing is gonna be in that?
In the courtyard areas around the back, yes.
Okay.
That's what we have now. It's what's currently there.
Okay. Yeah. Mario, this might be a question for you for the parking, that parking calculation, does that include parking for, that calculation include employees as well?
So it's kind of, our ordinance is a little unique in that it has been updated to kind of use a supposedly a modern standard for these caregiver facilities, and it only has this zero-point-two-five requirement per, per resident. And I believe the reason for that is it's trying to, it's making the presumption that a lot of the residents in the congregating facility don't have their own vehicles. So it's a matter of staffing for the employee, for the, for the residents. But, sorry, no, and then while we only, so that way, that's why technically the way the math works out, we, while we only require five, they're actually proposing fourteen, which, you know, that standard, I wasn't here when we created it, I mean, I think it goes from one end of the spectrum to the other, you know. Probably back in the day, we had one that was too, was too much, like probably employees and residents and dwellings and everything and visitor parking. Now we go into the other side where it's kind of minimal, seems like somewhere in the middle would be best, would best serve the facilities. So, so that, that's the, so technically they're, that are in compliance with the ordinance. It's a matter of having more to fit their function, I believe.
Okay. And I understand the argument about that the residents obviously not, not driving, but you'll, you'll have more visitors.
Right. See, you know. And that's why I think that's zero-point-two-five standard is a little too much on the other end. Like I said, I was, I think something in the middle because hopefully they're getting visitors and hopefully they're, you know, frequent and you'd want, and you have a thing to visit while the employee parking is to the west of the existing building. I presume the visitor parking will be in front of the building. I'd like to see that utilized.
Right. And so for the employees, is the intent to have them park in the front or by building A, kind of in the back?
We don't have designated, you know, I have my preference, which is to leave the spots in front of the homes for visitors, but I don't have it posted to say employee only. And I don't really, I don't think I have an intention to do that either because the question about shift change and third shift, oftentimes I'm okay with for third shift are caregivers parking in front of the building. You know, because they're leaving at six thirty anyways.
Okay. Irrigation, long-term maintenance for that, what's the plan?
It's very expensive to water.
I know.
Yes, yeah, so we have a, we have a sprinkler system. Probably all seen it, it, no, the plan is to do so.
Exactly, okay, okay. And then signage, I know, okay, let's say.
At this time, I don't need, you know, I'm not looking to put another sign up.
Okay.
We have the monument sign that we, that we added.
Yeah, we'll circle.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Might as well.
If the planning commission, just, just a question, the planning commission wanted some fully shielded lighting that limited downward, would that be a problem if we put that in the back part of the parking lot?
I would say at this point, I don't have any plans for that.
Okay. And then the other question is, is the, the road engineering letter, they talked about the eight-inch water main was changed when that was put in. Can you talk to that, Jim?
Yeah, when we master planned building A, eight of the entire development, we extended eight-inch water main on the west side of Glasby all the way up. And as part of that, since we're planning building B at the time, we put two service leads off, connections off the eight-inch main. So those are there today. Buildings have kind of changed a little bit, the way they are flipped.
And that was strategic to keep the prettier side of the building on the Glasby side versus having, like our existing building, we have our utility closets on the opposite side. So when you're driving by, it's.
So we're gonna re-tap the main that runs down Beehive Road and then come in from the west side of that building. So we'll have to look at the existing connections, probably cut and cap those off.
So you saw the?
Yep, that's what I'm, I'm sure I wrote.
No problem?
No issue.
He doesn't have an issue.
He doesn't.
That is funny. Exactly. I mean, I'm kind of like, it's been there for four years, it's capped, it's fine, we'll do what we need to do. So, I mean.
You reuse it out. You reuse it out.
You guys gotta get along up here.
We'll be right.
But no, I haven't an issue.
Did we get a review from the Department of Public Works?
I don't think that had any personal concerns, but I could really, again, the water main is all private once it leaves the exit underneath the Palliant Trail.
Correct.
That was a little bit of a concern last time around, but they got it.
We got through it, yep.
He gave a verbal to Kim and said nothing to add, it's fine, no issues from the U P W.
So they're gonna have a water main on private property.
It's like a big service lead you would go into an apartment complex in a way.
That's not me.
It's not imagined either there, it's made individually at the end.
Okay.
I think one per building, right? You don't have individual, here's my memory.
Right, one per building.
Or one.
And they are very accurate. Spin constantly.
Maybe come over there and turn your water out.
I know, right?
Those sprinklers going off, right?
Justin?
Most of my questions were answered, just two things, maybe a comment on the lights. I've driven by there so many times, you know, taking my kids to school and things like that, and the lighting, I can see that it's, it looks good and looks adequate, I would not recommend putting more lights. And your explanation even kind of really reinforces the reason why you don't have it, but, you know, less lights are actually kind of nice, so it's like less light pollution. So I would, I personally would recommend not to ask them for additional ones, so maybe how it currently is. One question I do have about the easement on the original building, so is that easement currently there right now? That sixty-foot easement? So did you guys have to, was it had, did you have to implement that when you built the first phase one? Do you?
I don't, so I, I understand the question, but I honestly can't remember if it was already there on the parcel, but I don't think it was. I think it was calculated, like Mario said, we took the center of the road, went back, and then we did the setbacks off of that. So I think it was a part of that.
So you, so basically you already agreed to it on phase one, so you wouldn't have an issue if you agree, you agreed to it on phase two?
No.
Okay.
My, my, he's gonna tell me, he's gonna tell me to shut up right now, but my, my only thing with that sidewalk, it's been a little bit of, it's been a little thorn for me as a new owner when we built, and part of that was bearing a hundred percent, I put a brand-new five-foot, it's fine, and then the maintaining it and everything. But prior to us purchasing and developing and investing all the money, the village actually maintained and shoveled that walk. So I just kind of felt a little bit like, you know, since I'm here, I'm, I'm there, now I'm the guy who's easy to, hey, call man, he'll do it. Again, I have no issue, it's just my, so no. Your question is, do I have any issues? No, I, I don't have any issues with it.
Joe, did we shovel that sidewalk?
I should, that just sounds a little puzzling to me.
Exactly.
We don't, we only, to my knowledge and understanding, five hundred years here, we only shovel and maintain village-owned property.
No, I, I understand. I know.
If someone showed it before, I don't know why. Now, if they did it before and they were doing it, they were probably charging the landlord.
It's okay.
I mean, I understand, that's our policy, we don't shovel anybody, we don't shovel the P D A downtown.
They don't do anything.
If it's privately owned there, we don't shovel it at all. So again, if they were doing it before because we sent notices and they didn't, it's fine, then we shoveled it and then they're not building. And then on the west side of the road is our sewer line also on the west side, so there's already some easement for the sewer line on that side as well.
And again, I, I don't have any issue with it.
Thanks, Mario.
Do you, I just want to tell you, you sound like every property, this property.
I mean, it is what it is, you know.
Keep away from that big, that's terrible.
No, it's, it's okay, and hopefully you guys appreciate what we've done for the last four years.
It's a nice place.
And we have no.
Well, and hopefully the kids will appreciate it, but it's in good shape and they're drudging their way up the.
Not a whole place.
Through snow, both ways.
That's right.
Justin, anything else?
Nope, that's it, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
C J? Okay. At this point, is there?
So I asked, but I waited to the end.
Yes, back to you.
They're not, they're not too old, I promise. I actually wanted to applaud you for your, for your landscape architect doing a pretty good job on reading our ordinance and realizing that, like, variety and they, although I do have some specific recommendations about a couple of the trees that, that's really substituting things in and out that are more native to Michigan. And we have been doing that on a regular basis with most of our site plans whenever possible. So I have, you know, specifically, there are four ginkgo trees in the plan, it goes on that native to North America even. So I would like to see any of the Michigan native trees, I have a couple, like, blackgum, serviceberry, American hornbeam, and even some of the new elm cultivars that are disease-resistant would be nice instead of the ginkgo. And I agree with the comments about the red maples, so you may want to look at switching out, moving the red maples to maybe the south line or the, somewhere in the west, and then using maybe the serviceberry or something that's a little smaller, you know, where the utility lines it in the front.
Yeah, the channel we have there, obviously, you got the utility pools that they're in the right of, and then we have a water main, so we've got to make a balance.
Which is why the maples are so big. Yeah, and they're a good choice for the site, just.
But not, not instance.
Yeah. And perhaps you could move them closer to the building, I don't know if they, we haven't ever been there, but since you don't, that would be, my suggestion would be look at serviceberries for, for that location in the, I like the use of white pines, I, I agree that maybe they shouldn't be too close to the swale, maybe you can, you know, put some of the other evergreen options near them, but. But really, I think it's a good plan in general, see if I had any other.
And she tells no of that. We still get graduation.
Oh, that's a lot more.
The only other, uh, the only other plant, it's, uh, one of the perennials, um, feather reed grass, um, there are only eight of them being called for, but my, my preference would be to see a, a, a native Michigan grass there, because feather reed grass is not native, it's not invasive, it's just, you know, not native, so. Uh, with your concern about watering, the more native plants you use, the better they're gonna tolerate drought in general. And it may allow you to, you know, use less watering, so it's, it's to your advantage. And also, the way your property is situated, having shade, you know, on, maybe on the west side or the south side might actually help you with some of your air conditioning. Because these, these trees are gonna be mature trees, and if you're there long enough, you'll, you know, see the difference.
Appreciate it.
Let's see if I had, I just wanted to double check. No, I think that was it.
Okay, any further comments from the question? All right, with that being said, do we have a motion, um, on how to proceed for the site plan? Justin?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan for the Beehive Homes of Oxford. Um, contingent upon the recommendations outlined in the McKenna letter dated September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, the row letter dated September fifteenth, the Oxford Fire Department dated August the twenty-ninth, and lastly, the Commissioner landscaping's, uh, species suggestions.
I would second.
I would like to recommend that we add the engineer, row engineering letter.
It was, uh, that's part of it, I included that.
So I will second that motion, um, Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Gastor, Gastor, I'm sorry.
No.
Schultz?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Nold?
Yes.
Melw?
Yes.
Pylek?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes. Approved, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, um, on to old business. So we have, um, in our two thousand and twenty-three action plan, identified opportunities to approve.
Appreciate it.
Um, or at least to revisit the current landscape standard and the haunting signage, um, ordinances. As the, these continue to be repeat, um, points of discussion, case in point this evening with Leslie. Um, while, um, all being, being an approvable landscape plan, um, there's certainly some things that I think can be done. Then we as a commission identified as opportunities, um, or at least a game plan to review. Yet, here we are in the, the third week of September, we haven't really moved off of, we'll call it top dead center, in making some progress in, um, updating the, the ordinances. Um, what I have done is I, I personally printed out a hard copy of the landscape ordinance. I'll pass out a copy to each one to help maybe handhold some of the review, um, for us to take a look at, um, and make further recommendations. But in the meantime, um, we have Mario and the McKenna group, um, as a resource to provide recommendations based on updated industry standards, subject matter expertise or knowledge as it relates to our ordinances, and, um, again, other municipalities. So, eh, before I, I'll make a recommendation and then we can have some open thought and discussion. Um, having talked with a few of you earlier, the recommendation is to enlist Mario and the McKenna group to review, maybe as a priority, the landscape ordinance, followed by signage, and then provide recommendations on how we can update, um, or should update, um, said ordinances for our review, and then to vote whether or not to establish next steps in action items once we receive his feedback. That would be my suggestion to make some progress here on, um, our twenty-three action plan. Open for comments, um, before we proceed with making that a call of formality reform.
Um, I think that we have a lot of, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no.
I just wait to be recognized.
No, I said, don't all speak at once, um, please go ahead, Leslie.
Uh, I only wanna to say that I think we have a lot of, a sense, a feel for this, we wanna make sure that administrative opportunities to review are streamlined better. And I, I often feel that, um, the applicants, you know, are a little bit in the dark about what's gonna be expected when they walk in here. And I think everyone was on it from just clarifying certain things. So I am, am in agreement that, I think we can make some suggestions, but I really think the polish and the accuracy and the updating and the language is best, um, provided by our, our planning consultants, so that would be, I agree with, with what you just suggested.
Okay. Um, you should all now have a hard copy of the landscape ordinance.
I've got an extra, I don't need one.
You.
It's a bad name.
Um, so, yeah, some of the things I recall you guys talking about was a specific statement in there about, um, mentioning native species and not, not invasive, of course, which should be a no-brainer, um, kind of like a mini cheat sheet of suggested items and suggested species, I think was some of the things I recall on the permits over the last few months.
Yeah, I think we're talking about just tweaking or clarifying the design standards, what do we, what do we wanna see and, and where, you know, even if what we're, what we're doing is directing the applicant to use the current MSU native species list or, you know, like, there, there's current language in here about, um, referencing the, um, the American Standard for Nursery Stack, for example, so some similar kind of reference about what, what would be acceptable plantings. I also think that there's always been confusion about the percentage of plants, it's never really said that we're talking about, you, you know, tree, you don't group, you know, perennials and the trees and just say, you know, the percentages are met, I think that needs to be clarified, those would be two things I know, um, that I've, I've noticed over time. But I, I agree that, you know, there are some things maybe we can narrow down a little bit tonight, but the specifics, I think we'll need to review again personally. Um, there's another thing I know some communities have, and we don't really have it in our ordinance, I'm not sure we need it, but we don't really say that we need a, a landscape plan as part of the site plan, it's just assumed that the landscape will be included, which might be adequate, I don't know, what do you guys think? Would it, would it help you?
I think annotation of it would be helpful, because some don't necessarily think about it and they have to be told, where's your landscape plan? Oh, well, there's some shown on here, well, but it's, it's a shown on an overall site, right? It's not a specific plan.
Yeah, I, I think there's some advantages to doing that, I mean, it does put a little bit more work and a burden to a degree on the applicant, but they should be paying attention to this, it's important.
And there are some sites where the retrofitting the building that might come to you where it maybe isn't as needed, but, and you saw some of those, unplastik of marijuana places where they're adding to.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um, I had, you know, I've been collecting notes over.
Leslie?
Yeah, so I think there are plant material standards, maybe design plan standards that can be clarified, um, making sure that prohibited plant materials and invasive species are addressed in some way. I don't think we should change the ordinance every time something gets added or taken away from the list, but there should be some master lists that we can count on to be reflect, you know, the needs of our community, that we can direct them to let them update it.
Which would then be a reference to some industry standard, like the American Standard for Nursery Stack.
Right.
Um, that can be the, maybe not the end-all, be-all, but that's a reference point, and our ordinance will then evolve as that standard evolves over time.
Right, at, you know, so like, the, um, Michigan State University Extension Service lists, some, but it's not a comprehensive list, it's just certain things that they're, they're just basically talking to homeowners. Um, I know that prohibited species and encouraged species are on like a PDF that I know the city of Birmingham, for example, provides. So I don't know how hard it is to, you know, cotton paste, or if that's not the way we should go.
Well, it's a little hard. No, no.
It's a little much, right?
No, no, actually, no, um.
But it's nice, because you go to and you go, oh, yeah, there's that, there's that elm species that they're using and it really worked, whatever.
Well, definitely in terms of, um, ways to, um, address the issue without, um, hind, hindering like further revisions, is referencing, you'll start off with referencing other outside resources, but also possibly referencing, uh, we could reference a local village one, and then that could be, it's, it's good enough to reference it in the ordinance, and then that can be amended as, as things, as preferences change and as, as, uh, uh, the MSU, it gets extended, I mean, excuse me, gets amended. So you start with that list and then it can be, as long as, as long as you reference it, then that one can be a work product, you know, that's policy that can be.
Well, I, I think there's.
That's a subtle way to do it.
Because you can, if the, if the village can, you know, annually update such a list.
Right.
They can be spotting problem trees and take them off, because they're not working in this community, not because MSU even has them on their list or something.
Exactly, and then it's also something that doesn't need an actual zoning orders amendment to actually take care of.
Right.
It could be something that they're just working with administrative staff and just amending a word document.
I think that's a really good idea, because it can be localized or customized a little bit without creating, hopefully, too much burden. I mean, the whole idea was, is to, in my mind, is to communicate clearly, set some standards, make sure everyone understands it, and it's gonna be a little work for all of us, but hopefully not over much work.
John? I need some clarification when we talk about a landscape plan, because tonight, for example, their, their drawings have a landscape plan and they have a landscape specification. If we call out what we ask for in our ordinance, then they should automatically be in this, the landscape plan for the drawings, as well as this landscape specifications for calling out what size of caliber trees and things of the example. What am I missing in the landscape plan that was discussed earlier?
Um, I, I think what, what we were referring to was the fact that some applicants, instead of having a separate sheet that is an actual landscape plan, they tend to add those elements to the site plan sheet, I believe, uh, we, the Clean Hub Car Wash kinda did that. It's not necessarily, uh, um, they, they technically did it, were in compliance with our standards, but, you know, it's one of those things where, um, I think it just needs further clarification, because actually, in our, in our list of, for cycling submittal, we do say a landscape plan should be submitted, but it's just not referenced in our actual landscape section. So just adding a reference to saying a landscape plan should be required in the landscape section as well will help, but then also making sure, just playing with wording rules, make sure that it's a separate sheet that includes all the elements, um, such, and, and those are standard elements such as, you know, the planting diagrams and the, the land, the notes from the, um, from landscape architect.
You're talking just in the ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, just in the ordinance, just in the ordinance.
That's good.
Because the intent is, I sometimes call it like belt and suspender situation. Technically, the landscape plan requirement is in the ordinance, but if you look at the landscape planned, landscape section, it's not. So you just put another, you know, another sentence that has that, and then it's, the, the whole intent would be to, uh, hopefully clarify it for applicants, make it easier for them, uh, and for them to understand, you know, the, the playing field, so they just know what they need to do. And, and hopefully simplify things for them as well.
I have a question for Terry and Joe. When these plants come in, do you check them, do you look for specific things of completeness in?
First thing we do is forward to Mario and Paul, so they have them as soon as possible, and then wait for their feedback, because that's their technical review is really what that's, like, more so than us, right?
So.
That, that's their.
So the check, the checks and balances is when something comes into the, the village, is forwarded to Mario. If it doesn't meet the requirements, then you write that up in your letter, so the planning commission knows that we, these drawings coming to us don't meet requirement.
Oftentimes, yeah, but, yeah, can myself, and directly, he might kick something back up two, three times, sometimes it might go back before it comes to you. Yeah, because part, I see part of this is some of the things that I've been working with Joe and Terry on, and trying to make sure that when we get, because when we get plans, there's plans that come to us and come to me, and just looking at them, you know, take a, they can look at it for five minutes, I mean, like, all right, they need this, 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 and this. And then we have, we need to have, we need to start having those discussions more with the applicants, because our, always in our intent is to put the plan in front of you that we feel warrants, you know, close to approval, um, rather than putting something in front of you that's gonna, like, take a lot of time to go over, and there's gonna be a lot of deficiencies and something. So something that's generally in compliance with all the standards of the ordinance, uh, and then, so that, so, so like you said, that, that, this is one of those items that we'll, we'll make sure we do it ahead of time.
Sure.
Uh, and, and also it helps the applicant too, because if, you know, we don't waste their time, instead of them sometimes being very, wanting desperately to get on the first agenda, we have to let them know, hey, you know, just calm down, let's, let's work on this for, for one more meeting, we, we have meetings twice a week, twice a month. We can let them, if you work on this, wait till that second meeting, and then you might get out of there in twenty minutes or hours, took us to address Beehive. Luckily Beehive, in Beehive's case, they act, their plans are actually very good.
So I guess the last question is, who does the burden fall on to make sure that they're meeting our new landscape plan ordinance?
It would be myself.
Often, oftentimes, they come, big conversation, I'm gonna build, can I build a home, or, or, they're, we're gonna do this, and then it shows up. Once in a while, they'll do a pre-meeting with Mario and I, and whether he's here or virtually, we've done a couple of those in the last couple of months. Meet with them, they're on step one, they wanna know, what are the next ten steps, and then we walk them through all those ten steps for an hour, then they're better prepared to show us up with that plan versus showing up half-baked.
And we do like doing that, because then we can tell them from the get-go, hey, our, our intent is, you know, they ask for their schedule sometimes right away, we're like, this is the schedule, but we wanna get your plan substantially complete, so that way you're not, you don't feel like you've been raked over the coals, or you, you know.
I think the end result is making our jobs easier, making this meeting more efficient, shorter time-wise possible, and things of that nature.
And, and efficient for the avenue too, so that way they know that, they, they know the, once again, they know, I like saying they know the playing field, they know this is what's required. These are our ordinances, as long as you comply with the ordinances you ask, you'll get in front of the planning ratio quickly, but.
Yeah, because.
It takes time for them to invest in it.
In my experience, a lot of times, if they just let the engineer create the landscape plan, that engineer may not be very knowledgeable, and it, it almost looks like they just go to the computer menu and pluck some things and.
Off that site plan and copy and paste.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, because oftentimes, I'll tell them, or, or, I think, just look, you sure, you sure to look where you do our site plan, or, or criteria, you sure to look at the landscape criteria, there's very specific things in there you gotta address.
And I, 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 I agree that it helps if they know and they, and, and they can see the language here, so especially with regard to a landscape plan, like, the language isn't here, I didn't know it was somewhere else in the Hortensee, you know? Uh, one, one more kind of asterisk, I guess, to this discussion would be, um, I don't know how to address it exactly, but it would be nice to see some reference to sustainability, so that, um, it's actually less impactful on, and less draining on resources, you were talking about watering, you know, irrigation is very expensive. So I don't know what we can do about that from the top down to try to assist people in developing, uh, landscape plans that are less, like, use fewer resources or, or use them more wisely or something. I don't know how that's handled in other communities, do you?
Some people have like green, green infrastructure, you know, bioswales and things like that, you see large, like, monards or something like that, where they'll have many catch base, or many, uh, drain collections around, all the islands in the parking lot have trees and they collect water, right? Rather than one five-acre one over here, they have an acre over there, a bunch of small ones are scattered around the parking lot in the parking structure, the islands are, are also bioswales, so to speak. Uh, that helps, again, a lot of that's up to them, a lot of it can be pushed from the top in, but.
But most of, uh, the, the. Most of that is, uh, the.
But most of, most of that is the builder's choice to get that stuff done. The builder's choice to try to, you know, some builders have no interest really in landscaping or have, don't have that much interest in the landscaping and, you know, is it, it's, you know, with this, you know, with the landscaping plan is a guideline. It seems like most of the people that do come up here, they just don't know what species to use. It's not that our landscaping is bad necessarily, it's just more or less not, them not being educated because I don't really think they're plant experts, they might, but it's, it almost sounds like it's just a, a sheet or a guideline that can be given to say, hey, look at, these are, these are the plans we recommend, then, you know, because as I read the kind of, you know, the landscaping ordinance, it's pretty, it's a, it's a pretty great document, it's pretty detailed in there.
Especially all the parking lot and stuff, it's very detailed.
Correct, it's, it, there's a lot of stuff in here. But once again, it's like your knowledge is fantastic and, but not everybody has that fantastic knowledge that you have and it's just, it's more or less that cheat sheet, so we're basically having that document to point to them to.
So if a cheat sheet suggests a preferable or preference, preferential design, you know, related to sustainability and, you know, stormwater management, bioswales and all of that, that, that would be nice to see on that same village creative document, I think. But more as a suggestion, not as any kind of ordinance requirement.
Exactly, that, that's, that's, I think, the key is that when it comes to the landscaping that we require in the ordinance and those things versus what we prefer, the best way would be to have it as, as part of the handout or the cheat sheet handout. And one thing you can do, because, also because it's hard to like try and create ordinance links for those kind of things because, for example, highlighting use of native species or, you know, native grasses or something like that, you know, there's benefits, there's no pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers, that sort of deal, so that saves them costs if they choose it, and certain sites that are larger, that's more of a larger thing. But even just something as simple as choosing native species, you know, lately, even with all the crazy weather we're having, you know, having native species will be more, will strong, be stronger and more capable of handling the normal shifts in our temperate climate and therefore they, because we do have a requirement and everybody has a requirement that any landscape material that's planted, if it doesn't survive within three years, it's gotta be replaced. Well, if they choose a species that isn't native or they choose, go a species that, that we wouldn't recommend, it might be that they're gonna find themselves replacing that landscaping in those trees, because those trees have died. So the whole key, and, and so that's not something you can necessarily, while we have the requirement to replace it, the logic behind that can be put in the, in the handout to say something like native species are more.
I agree, it's an educational piece.
Just to, to lower your cost in the long run. It might, might cost you another fifty dollars per tree, but it's better than spending another four hundred dollars per tree a year from now.
One other note I found somewhere in my stuff is a lot of times the, when we're talking about a site where trees are gonna be removed, the applicant doesn't always provide accurate information about, you know, how many trees they are, they'll put it in their site plan, but they might not be accurate, and I'm wondering if we can ask for something about, I don't know, like tree, uh, uh, tree identification or some kind of a survey so we know if they're taking out four mature, you know, if they're taking out four dying blue spruce, that's a different picture than if they're taking out four mature, like, white pines.
Or if they're taking out cottonwoods.
Or if they're taking out cotton, yeah, like some of the trees they're saving on the site are cottonwoods.
Right, right, exactly.
Which is okay, I mean, it's better than not having a tree, I guess.
And the key to that, I think, would be, because that does happen on their communities and the benefit, and that is actually more about reflecting, hopefully what you would think would be policy, which is their existing, you know, mature trees that add to the character. If they can save them, then that is a benefit not only for us, but then we can make it a benefit for them too by providing them as credit. For example, like any kind of existing trees that are saved could be used as meeting the requirements of any new landscaping. So, because, you know, sometimes it, it doesn't make sense when, you know, some of the developments that they come in, they clear cut, clear cut the entire site and they put a lot of two and a half inch caliber trees on there. It doesn't really help, but if they can either shift a parking space or shift a building, save some native trees and then suddenly all they're, all they're doing is moving something over and then also don't have to spend as much money on the landscaping, then it's beneficial for the community because you keep the trees and it's beneficial for the applicant because they don't spend as much money.
I think that's a, that's an underprising idea and if we do a cheat sheet, we might be able to look at it like, I don't think all existing trees are equivalent in value, I don't wanna get into a long discussion about it at all, but we just talked about cottonwoods, for example, are messy and problematic, but if it was a mature white oak tree, we're talking about a valuable tree, so I, I don't think we should be getting into the business of determining, you know, what will or won't meet what criteria, but I do think that if we're gonna do a cheat sheet, we might, and we're gonna discuss some kind of credit toward landscape requirements, we should have some idea of what, what we're letting them do and, and, and because it's the amount of equivalent. And so I think that's gonna cause more work right now.
Right, well, and giving it a, having this as, as an option for the property owner, I think it would be key too, because that's a way of introducing the concept to them, so it's not a requirement, but it's an option and hopefully they see the benefit of it. But it's not something that would be required.
Yeah, because, you know, it's some of, some of the things that, you know, some of the things that I'm hearing, it's almost like we're trying to come up with a landscape design for the customer, for our applicant, which that's not our, it's not our job, or it's not our, it's, it's like asking for, hey, I want you to build in this style. I, I don't think that's what an ordinance is for, just to help they guide them and direct them, not tell them what to, but, so I think some of, I don't wanna say that it sounds like we're asking or trying to do, it is, it seems like we're asking for a lot to do to give them instead of, which I love, because I, I think landscaping is extremely, extremely important when, when it comes to designing the community. And it's, I think landscaping and trees are, you know, there's been studies of how the quality of life and with landscaping and with trees and it makes the community much, much better and healthier. Yes, but I also think that's, we, and we have to also be careful on how much restriction maybe we put on landscaping as well.
I agree with you.
We can't design it for them.
If you get the impression that that's what I'm going for, I'm, I'm trying to actually avoid that.
Yes.
If we do a cheat sheet with examples and guidance, I think that, that, that gives them a clear picture of where we're going, what the, what our value system is as a community, so we don't have to get, you know, into, into the weeds with them.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, cut you off real quick, I'm sorry, it just sounded like we wanted a whole, we wanted to really kind of revamp the whole ordinance that we had and it just, you know.
No, in my eyes, and I probably did, if that came across, in my eyes, it was the idea of giving them a tool as an option and listing it out. Because while some, some landscape architects that are hired by the property owner might suggest it and convince them of it, maybe the property owner doesn't know or maybe the landscape architects don't know that we prefer that, so it's just about showing an optional tool that could be, that if they chose to, they could, they could use it. So it's not anything that would be required, but like you said, it's a, it's a list, that's why a lot of the things in there are, are listings as options are landscaping that if their site required certain conditions and they have to, they, they, these are the options that they have, so this would be just another option for property owners.
So with, with that being said, what I'd like to do, I'm gonna summarize, just to make sure that we're, we're above the set here. The, the intent of revisiting a, an amendment or revision to this specific ordinance is to eliminate ambiguity, is to optimize the application process, both from the applicant's side as well as our approval process, while also ensuring we remain in alignment with village standards and expectations. So with that intent established, what I would like to do is make a motion to request McKenna's review of our current ordinance to provide feedback and guidance on certain elements, including but not limited to the plant material industry standards, which may incorporate elements of a percent mix of different species, updated list of prohibited plant materials, a proposed language to reference the requirement of a landscape plan in the ordinance, as well as maybe an indicative quote, end quote cheat sheet that would offer further guidance to the applicant in order to optimize the application process.
Second, second.
Okay.
Before you go for a motion, we have a discussion on that.
Yes.
Okay, so, which is, which is great, and so we're, we're saying, so to clarify, we're saying McKenna is gonna do research into doing that, making that happen, right?
Yes.
And to all those things that you have. From a budgetary standpoint, that's, that's.
It's okay, yeah, we discussed it in line in advance, yeah. I, I know that that was a point that was brought up before, so that's been aligned.
Perfect.
Yep.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, do you wanna roll into the audience saying, is this part of that? Or do we have to do it separately? That's gonna be so simple, we're gonna give you one or two quick little options, I think, on that and you can just. Work it much less complicated.
The intent, I mean, of, of this discussion in, at a macro level is to improve efficiencies and align certain standards with repeat themes and open points of discussion. With that feedback, Joe, I guess what I'll do is request an amendment to that motion to also incorporate the signage ordinance, auditing signage, yes, thank you. Do I, do I, there was a support, do I need to reiterate the motion? I can rewind my.
I'll take that again specifically.
Yes.
On signing, it was really basically, you know.
Okay, and we have second, correct?
If I may, just in terms of clarification for myself, I think we've got a really good discussion and I, I feel like I have a very good direction in this. Would, would you be adverse if we actually, if I came back with actual proposed ordinance amendment language, like so amended language? Is that enough or you just want them to read? Because I think based on, on the direction, it is pretty straightforward. Because, and the only reason I mention that too is that sometimes I find it best that if there's draft language in front of you, that gives you something to react to, so that can, that can help, you know, obviously it's draft language, so it's just a first, first shot. And so it's a matter of you looking at it and say, alright, yeah, this is the way we want it, or this is not anywhere close, so that way it gives me direction further on as I move along, if that seems okay.
Would you not do a red line, so we have?
Exactly, it would, sorry, I mean, cut off there, John, but yeah, that, that's my intent, yeah. Have the original language in front of you, redline through it of what text might need to be removed and blue italicized text for the new, new language and as a first draft, and then you can react to that and see if, once again, if it's appropriate.
I think that's a reasonable to live with.
Yeah, we've done that a number of times, I thought that was very effective personally.
Okay, good. Do we need a roll call vote for that particular motion that's seconded? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. I never want to do sides again.
So are you two, two opposed?
I think I'm gonna.
I agree.
No, I'm gonna agree.
No, she wasn't though, we came after he said our votes, because she didn't want to do sides.
I never wanna do sides.
Where, where specifically, you have one?
You're there.
If that were.
Okay, moving on from old business now that we have that motion complete, public comment. Does not appear to be so. Consultant and administration comments? We're done, okay. The John Oxford Township planning?
The township is beginning activity and updating our master plan and that will be a monumental effort that we're undertaking. And we've had some joint meetings with our ZBA Planning Commission and Township Board to bring everybody in to what, what's going on over there.
Okay. The ZBA?
So they met the first time, what, a year and a half, Terry?
Who knows, they have some problems.
Okay.
A little less than there though.
So it was five over Lakeville, they should head out Lakeville, rode the old Lakeville Court kind of town, there's five over Lakeville, the house that looks like it's about to fall down and the drive behind it, which is falling down. That's been quite a transition for about a year and a half dealing with the owner. It's a unique situation where the township village line goes directly to the home and the garage or storage building in the back. We've been wanting to, they wanna, they wanna rebuild it where it is, if they just tear it down, then they're gonna move off to apply, to meet setbacks. So through this whole process, we've met with them and we've met jointly with the township as well because they obviously have the house and the structure on the township side. In order for them to rebuild where it is, they gave the setback grants for us, they came and they were granted a setback grant. Mario and I have talked about this, in almost a year now it seems. That was granted, now they're gonna go to the township to like setback grants on that side of it. Also, on the east side of property, which is the township portion, is actually zone industrial, they're gonna want them to have a rezoned commercial or residential as well. The intent is for the property owner to tear that home down, rebuild on the same site, the sewers connects into there, the water connects into there. There's a slab underneath the back building, they wanna tear that down, rebuild it on the same slab. So with the grant, those variances to the setbacks, again, there's plenty of room there, if it wasn't for the weird angle of the township village jurisdiction line burned through the buildings, if that wasn't there, it wouldn't be an issue. So that was granted, if they get their variance for the setback at the township, then they'll be able to move forward with dealing with those dilapidated, uh, these structures. End goal is to take the property then and subdivide it and hopefully get three viable lots, one would be access off Lakeville Court, actually two off Lakeville Court. We looked at it years ago, it looks like there's just enough room, and then one, where the home is now actually still has a drive by on Lakeville Road. So that's the end goal, but if you ever drive by that, if you hear from people what's going on at that place, it's been a long process. Some, we really had to carrot and stick it with the, the property owner, finally we had, we're pushing to say, if you don't get this going, then we're just gonna make a condemned and tear it down.
How many acres is it?
It, maybe one.
Okay.
So a lot, maybe. But they only need eighty foot frontage, it's a little bad because of the curve of Lakeville Court, how the frontage is calculated. We think there's enough there to get that one plus two to the west of it, and that would be two viable lots.
Is that on the north or south of?
North, north side of, yeah. Yeah, right where the Lakeville Court, the old Lakeville Road comes out, there's a courting in, the Melvin J, that's the north.
Okay.
It, just to the east of that, you see that five of them, once you see it, you can't not see it.
Okay.
But so that was ZBA.
Deal, Joe?
DDA, the DDA project with the northeast parking lot started, the loan machine came in yesterday and first thing they did is still grabbing John Burrow Realty right up at, at Burke Street. First thing they know, went in, found those concrete below our actual parking lot. So then the Melvin, they started over there behind Grab Capital and Clonaromic Naps and did the rest of the parking lot, everything's going good, but below the parking lot from the old John Burrow Realty, as you head east, probably about halfway across the parking lot is pine tree. You know, from Burke Street all the way to the Transformers there at the back, south is the east corner. So that delayed all that, they continued to mill out the whole site and to remove, mill out materials. Plan initially was to have it all done and packed and rolled today and the parking lot would sit and pack and, and all through and it began, and it paid next week. There's a small, gotta work on it, Edison Alley. And then this afternoon, as they're right behind Grab Capital, they're vibrating, rolling, packing it all down, all of a sudden there's a crack in the ground and they take a shovel in and it goes all the way through. There's an underground sitter that no one knew about there, it's probably about six foot deep, it's block structure, got a cement lid on it, they saw it got a hole in the lid and it's actually, you stick your tape all the way, it's underneath the curb. So it's not a simple. So it's not as simple, let's dig it out, fill the hole, and if it was thirty feet away, we would. It's got condo running through it, uh, you know, four or five inch condo running through it, um, sometime along, Edison bored right through this thing to put the, the service to the eighteen north. Um, but that was, I'm glad they found it today, and not have been paving on it next week. But again, so that just adds more time and more cost, that'll be flow filled with, uh, about, we figure about thirteen yards of concrete, total, from fifteen size to eight. Um, hopefully tomorrow. And they did remove the rest of that concrete now, um, behind John Burck, that was just before the meeting. So they should, by the end of the day tomorrow, it's a lot all removed. Unless we get hung up on the flow fill, then can't get it in tomorrow. Because right now you're only two days deep concrete. Our hope is to have it all leveled out, rolled and packed and sitting like that all through the weekend and good to go and begin paving on Monday.
So the city of Oxford own all of the parking lots in each of those progress?
Yes and no, so the, behind twenty-two north, it was the old way with dirt glass, which has now been sold, there's a nine and nine year lease that we have on that portion.
Okay.
So technically, we have the rights to it and responsibility to pay, but that's where we ended. Actually, we would tend to put in private property in the north end because there was a large dump, uh, hump, there were those followers that were under the ground right at the corner there. Well, to make that transition better, we had to go a few feet in the neighboring property, good floors. But that, what's not being done all the north, that's all private out there behind, um, home ground, behind the forty north, which is, that's all private. A lot of people assume that's village parking lot back there, but it isn't, that's private.
But what about the one that's being constructed just behind like that new building, that's, that's good.
Um, they what those buildings, the beauty private across from British Street equipment?
Uh, yeah, that's.
Okay, they are pouring, they, they dug a lot yesterday, so as far as layout, curb, sidewalk, we get a lot of it for. Um, they were gonna have to go in tomorrow, but they, tomorrow worked out, canceled, so they'll be back tomorrow. But they didn't have concrete scheduled for tomorrow, so they're gonna come and form tomorrow, and then come back and finish more concrete on Thursday. And that would be the outline, and then all the curb sidewalk should be complete, um, hopefully at the end of the day Thursday. That would be the parking lot that's gonna end up being the village public parking lot. This ties into our existing parking lot, just to their south, like you said, it's a little bit curved.
Okay, and with that, down behind like the booster building where they're rebuilding it, like how much does that, like a parking lot redo, like, cost?
The quote came in around, it was estimated around two eighty-nine, it came in like two seventy-five.
Two point seven five million?
No, no, two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay, I guess like that.
Um, but the removal of that concrete, of course, will cause more and, and filling in that system and, and drainage structure probably be another five. It'll be, you know, there's probably gonna be ten and fifteen thousand dollars extras added.
Okay, thank you.
DDA has covered most of that, uh, building council chipped in about twelve thousand five hundred, um, last year as part of, to help with some of the engineering costs for any soil problems and things like that.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
The, the, uh, all the plaza area over there, all that was all done and all fresh, looks nice, and now it's the black house gonna be coming up there, it's gonna be really nice. Hopefully, in a week or so, we'll be done.
Great. Um, so far as commissioner comments, Tom would begin?
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna question it.
I see future business here listed on the, uh, agenda. Is there preemptive warning or?
So it's something there, maybe, okay. Yeah, um, we, we, we met across BI homes, there are two parks, right, and then, um, the contractor came, gave us a concept plan back in end of May, middle of June, somewhere near Icon, that's the one I've met at the township, went over the concept plan, about a large multifamily operation plan. It was gonna be kind of a joint thing, talked about a joint plan between, and then a lot of differences between our density, ability, flex zoning and then the density and PD delays in the township zoning difference. Uh, ours is much more favorable, so the applicant, um, was hoping to maybe, maybe just separate two, do what he can on ours, do what he can on theirs, connect them. So it is one large complex, but can keep them separate. And, and I told him, same thing, be sure to check your, uh, the, the ordinance really well, be sure to check the landscape ordinance really well. But he was in last week, again, and he said that the financing arrangements that they're trying to give us now is so tough, they might just put a pin in that thing. We've not even seen a, other than the concept plan that they gave us, which was pretty good, in conceptually speaking, but nothing detailed or in a chief's, you know. Or you've never received a site name application yet.
Okay. Let's, uh, we'll see how that unfolds.
The, the other thing is, I've, I've had a couple of planning meetings with, Mario was on the other day with the Hampton Black property, I think there's a pretty good chance of this developer, he, the one gentleman already owns the two spaces to the, uh, west, the old railroad grade and the parcel behind the post office. This gentleman's already owned that for about three or four years. Now another gentleman came to the scene, was looking to do something with the Hampton Black, now they teamed up together, and we met with them, was it last Wednesday, Mario?
Yeah.
A pre-planning meeting with them, kinda give them a lowdown of what we want, what we're looking for, what we'd like to see. I always give everybody the same thing when we're talking about, about townhomes and things like that, so we're not looking for two by threes wrapped in by home. You know, we're not looking to slap it up and get out of town, stuff, you know, that would be the standard, especially closer to downtown. Uh, but I think they're very, I'm very encouraged, that's probably the most encouraging I've felt about that parcel at this point.
So the, uh, DDA economic committee is, is really, really interested in trying to expand, um, downtown to, um, kind, kind of have, have mixed use buildings going down Verdic, Verdic Street right there. I was wondering if there is any way that we can figure out to, like, encourage them to?
Well, they're, uh, they're multifamily zoning, the, the, and it is in the DDA district, so some problems and grant, I think that it might help them perhaps, um, in regards to the Hampton Black property. But again, where the parking lot is now, that's pointed to, it's bad, the local property, all the way around there is semen transition, which is mixed use, multi-use, multifamily.
And have to.
No, but it's intention is multifamily, it's purely residential.
Okay.
But again, that's a little bit farther down the other side of the post office, and a bunch, bunch of residential homes already, so that's, that's, that's removed one more layer, I think, to where the multifamily is still busy enough for that section, but.
Okay.
If, if I may, um, with that discussion valuable, um, but, uh, forget the proper term, course correct.
Is there a point, Joe?
Yeah.
I can lay it all out, hopefully a little bit of that will come into you when you mention future business.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
That sounds good. Which moves us to, uh, agenda item number fifteen, is there?
So moved.
With, with that at, uh, eight.
Twenty-one.
Seventeen.
Yeah, that's right, so.
Seventeen.
We will adjourn.